We don't have a problem with the amount of water that comes to our, our land here. It's retaining it, it's capturing it. I think that's one of the talents I feel like God's given me is that when a problem is put in front of us, somehow my mind just works, 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 works and comes up with creative ways to say, well, have we thought about this approach? My father was in law enforcement for nearly 40 years and I'm very grateful for him being able to, he enjoyed it, he loved it. You know, there's a lot of tough situations he dealt with, but it was a good experience for him as well.
From the Blue Form Media Studios, this is the 435 Podcast, The Pulse of Southern Utah.
Hey everybody, welcome back to another episode of the 435 Podcast. I'm your host, Robert McFarlane. Over the next several episodes, guys, we're going to be doing a deep dive into the 2025 municipal elections. Mayors and city council members from all over Southern Utah are going to be seeking your vote in helping shape the future of our cities. So this is the place that you're going to be able to get one-on-one conversations with all the candidates to help you make the best decision for you come election season. So please make sure you like and subscribe, share it with other voters throughout Washington County, and make sure they have the information they need to make the decisions that are going to be best for us in the county. We hope you enjoy this episode and this series of episodes, guys. We'll see you out there. Shad Johnson.
Yeah.
Welcome to the podcast, man.
Thank you.
So you're running for Ivans City Council.
I am.
Well, thanks for sticking your head out there and putting it under a microscope for the rest of the world to give you some scrutiny.
Yeah.
So have you run for public office before?
Nope, not for public office. Um, I've, I guess been elected to positions in smaller group settings like Leadership Dixie, home, homeless associations. Um, there's one more, or delegates, I've been delegates for the, for the Republican Party, but, but not for this, so.
Yeah. So this is the first, first go of elected office. So it's a little bit out of the comfort zone.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit.
So we're going to kick it off with some either ors, or like this or that. It'll be a quick this or that, just to kind of get an idea of what kind of a guy you are.
Okay.
All right. And you don't know any of these questions. I haven't given you any questions. So for people listening, it's a cold conversation. So, uh, we'll see how it goes. All right. First question, dogs or cats?
Cats.
Cats. Skiing or snowboarding?
Snowboarding.
Snowboarding, nice. Uh, burgers or tacos?
Tacos.
Tacos. Tacos are good. It's Taco Tuesday.
That's right.
Okay. Um, mountains or the beach?
Beach.
The beach? Nice. Where's your favorite beach location?
Laguna Beach is nice.
Yeah.
But I think I prefer Hawaii.
Prefer Hawaii? I think a lot of people prefer Hawaii.
Yeah, right.
Takes a while to get there, but once you're there, it's pretty nice.
For sure.
Last question, roller skates or roller blades?
Probably roller blades.
Roller blades? Nice. They don't, people don't roller blade anymore. I think it's so strange.
It's true.
It was so popular when I was a kid.
It's almost like roller skating has come back, you know?
Yeah.
It's kind of different.
It's different.
Yeah.
So, uh, you're a cat guy.
Yeah. My wife doesn't like cats, so I don't get any cats.
My wife doesn't like cats, so I don't get any cats. So I know exactly how you feel.
I like the value of dogs because I like the security they provide for really just dog food only.
Yeah, right? Yeah. But, uh, cats, cats are unique. There's different bonds. It's a different bond from a cat to a dog. That's interesting. So, um, tell us a little bit about you, um, you know, what brought you to the point where you wanted to run for office in Ivans?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I like serving. Um, I really enjoy serving people. Um, so for me, almost any of the opportunities I've had in my life to be of service, um, has been really meaningful. Um, and I've had a lot of people ask me about it. Um, you know, for those who are familiar with the local organization called Leadership Dixie here in town, I've been heavily involved in that for the last six years. Um, I have a great deal of respect and gratitude for that and a huge shout out for it. For those who are interested in leadership, it's a really great leadership development organization. So I was the chair of the organization a couple of years ago, but just some great people. But, um, as I've, I guess, developed, so to say, um, I've had quite a few people in my circle of influence say, hey, have you thought about running for, you know, for city council or something like that? And my wife had some pretty serious health challenges, um, that we only overcame last fall, maybe early into this year. Um, and for the longest time, it was, it was, it was pretty hard, um, to do anything different. Um, I felt like I owed her my obligation and my time. And so because that, um, I can't, I didn't feel like the right time to even consider it. So, but you know, suddenly the last few months, um, it's just started coming to me as an option and I started talking to a lot of the people that I know that are running or, or serving in city council and asked them what they thought about it. And most of them say it's very fulfilling. So,
Yeah.
Even though both incumbents in Ivans are, are running again, I'm not necessarily running against them. I'm, I'm running just for an opportunity. If the community feels like it's a good, good time to make a change, then great.
Yeah.
If not, then I understand that too.
Yeah, that makes sense. So how long have you lived in Ivans?
This time for 13 years and I, we lived in Ivans for seven years previous. During the Great Recession, we, we spent three years in Alaska with some family.
Oh, nice.
So a total of 20 years.
Yeah. I, I saw you maybe, you did some, uh, you built houses. I know you, you do, uh,
Kitchen designer.
Kitchen designer.
Yeah. So I've helped a lot of people with, with projects on their homes. So.
Yeah. What, what do you, what do you feel like, um, you know, looking at Ivans? I would, I would make this statement and maybe some people disagree, but they, they tend to be anti-development, right? They want to keep, you know, as, as few structures going vertical as possible, uh, at, at whatever cost, really. And so when you, as somebody who is in that kind of space, how do you respond to somebody that might have a criticism for you of being a, they always throw us in these buckets, a developer.
Yeah.
But you're not necessarily a developer, but.
I mean, I'm in my business and my income is based on the opportunity to help people with, with doing that very thing, right? So naturally I have an interest there. Um, you know, that's interesting you say that. I mean, after living in Ivans for so long and the people that I know and, and as I've spent some time around the city council and other settings to see what's, what's being requested of them to be allowed to be done, including the Black Desert Resort, which is something our company actually helps with, by the way. But, um, I don't feel that it's as, um, resistant to development. What I think the challenge is, is you have a lot of people who fell in love with, with the area, the, the setting, the feel. They've come to it, they don't want it to change. And I respect that because, you know, why, why do you want something to change if you like it, right? And, and that's one of the other things too, just to add to the reason why I'm here, not necessarily here, but why I'm running is because, I don't really have a lot of big changes I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting to be made. I want to help it continue to be done well and, and tweak things and improve things from there. But as far as the development is concerned, um, I think people want to be smart. Sometimes we can probably take it to an extreme and say, we're going to put too many contingencies on a development. I do have a concern about housing. Um, you know, we mentioned briefly that we interacted at the attainable housing forum, um, out there at Black Desert. And, and I think that's a very, very serious challenge right now for, for a lot of parts, not just Utah. There's a lot of parts of, of the US. My poor adult children who are trying to find a place to live, it's really hard for them to find a way to afford it. And there's a lot of tools out there to make it possible, but I think cities can do more in those, in those cases. I'm not sure exactly what that might mean. I'm a really creative guy. So sometimes when a challenge is thrown in front of us, I can sometimes come up with really creative ideas and let other people vet those ideas and see if we can come up with a good solution. I've been very good at that. I don't really have, um, you know, a science or an equation right now to see how that will work, but I think it needs a, a lot more attention. Or else all of our workers have to live in other places that are, you know, even the workers working for Black Desert, you know, they can't afford the housing. So where do they go live? They gotta live in outskirts, you know, far enough away, that makes it inconvenient for travel and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. It's a difficult, it's a difficult, difficult?
Yeah.
It's a difficult. It's a difficult, uh, issue because it's so complex. There's not really like this easy fix, right? And if there was, it would already be done.
Yeah.
But it, it's something that we kind of keep top of mind. Uh, so as far as, let's just stick on the affordable housing. Do you see, I know, uh, the school and institutional land trust has opened up, uh, a big block of land there adjacent to Ivans. Do you see, and maybe you don't have a feel for it at the moment, but do you see some kind of annexation into the city of Ivans? Is that something that you could see them doing or is?
I suppose. I mean, um, I hear of a lot of, um, arrangements being tried to be done by the, the county and, and a lot of other organizations trying to, um, trade land, right? Including SITLA as being one of the, specifically the BLM. But yeah, I suppose that's always a consideration. I think if there's good, good merit for it, if the, the city can trade something of value to, you know, to the BLM or somebody else for annexation of land, I think it's worth considering for sure.
Yeah.
Anything they can do. I, I like what SITLA is doing. I think that RFP they put out, they didn't have to do that. You know what I mean?
It's the first time, I think this is the first time they've ever done an RFP for specifically affordable housing.
Yeah. I mean, because their whole purpose is to make as much money as possible for their, for the entities that benefit from that.
Yeah.
Which are really important entities in our state.
Yeah, mainly schools.
Right. And so because of that, I, I, I think that that says a lot about everybody in that organization to say, hey, we're willing to try to be a part of the equation too, to help with the solution. And so I think, you know, you, you put all the pieces together between cities and, uh, cities and counties and, and SITLA and developers and, and a lot of parties. If people come to the table with a sincere desire to make something work, I think we come up with some cool solutions. The state's even shipping in doing some things, right? So I'm not sure exactly what that means for Ivans particularly as far as a city. But if I'm voted on, I certainly want to do my part to, you know, suggest ideas and, and see if I can be part of the solution too.
Yeah, cool. Well, so transitioning into like infrastructure and, and, you know, challenges that the city might face. Where do you stand on, you know, uh, public parks? How do you, uh, feel like Ivan's doing currently with managing, you know, infrastructure build outs and budgets, things like that? Do you have any, any thoughts or anything that, um, you might look at differently?
That's a good question. Tonight, there's a, um, a meeting and discussion regarding, um, tax, taxation and, and maybe there's some possibilities of a, of an increase in tax to meet some needs and wants that the community has. So I'll go there and I guess gather a little more information on what they're suggesting. You know, I, I think it depends on what it is, I guess. Infrastructure, certain infrastructure, I think is 100% on the shoulders of the city. And they've got to make sure that, um, and I say we, I'm a member of the city and the community, right? Is make sure that there's, um, funds put aside for that and it's planned well, it's thought out and there's multiple bids put out. I think that's required anyway, but that they're, they're well thought out and considered so that it's not just take the highest bidder or, you know, go with that, that route. So, so, you know, sewage and, and water and, and all those things, obviously the city is responsible for. But, but there's other things that, that I think the city does a good job with when, you know, there's, there's a road without any gutter and curb. You know, and, and the developer is going to develop that land. Um, there's a joint responsibility now, an agreement, they develop that, they put in the curb and gutter. I like that type of concept. It's like, okay, then we both can make this work for us, right?
Yeah.
And I think that that's, that's a really good way to work. Um, I don't really know of any serious concerns with infrastructure right now. I've, I've tried to pay attention to look into the, um, into the city, um, plans, but I don't know of any really major concerns right now. And if there's one I'm missing, I apologize. I'll look into it and give my thoughts.
I think the one that jumps out to me is just public safety and the sharing with Santa Clara, because my thought would be, you know, both Santa Clara and Ivans, Black Desert being, you know, the eggs in the basket of bringing in revenue to the city.
Yeah.
Santa Clara had, now has Harman's and, and that commercial entity, but Ivans really doesn't have a whole lot of tax base to draw from other than directly from the citizens and property taxes and things like that.
No, it's a good point.
So I think as, as it continues to grow, um, you know, is the expectation that we're probably just going to raise taxes on that? Or is there maybe something, you know, incentives to bring in a little bit more commercial, a little bit more of a revenue base that expands beyond just the properties?
Good question. I, from my limited perspective right now, um, I think that there's a couple of areas of town I think that could be very appropriate for some commercial development. I mean, you have the new RV park in town on, on the highway there. There's a couple of spots on the highway I think would make a lot of sense, even out by the, close to the reservation perhaps where they've got the gas station. But certainly, um, Second East and, and Main Street, um, you know, you've got Rocky Vista University on the one corner. And there's three, um, basically corners. You've got the, the bike shop on the one corner, but there's two other corners that aren't developed. I don't know. I'm assuming that zone for commercial, I haven't looked into it, but it seems like a really great place to develop some more commercial. Yeah. I mean, one of the downsides, good, bad or ugly is we love having Harmon's close to us, um, and, and all the other supporting businesses there. However, all of that goes to Santa Clara.
Yeah.
So we need to do more, I think. Um, and I don't think the citizens would be too much against, as long as it's well thought out, you know? I know that when the gas station was put in out by the roundabout on the way to Snow Canyon and, and Tuukon, I know there was some resistance about that. But I honestly think it's a pretty good addition. So I think it's turned out to be well done.
Yeah, I think so too. So, um, what's your feeling on the SITLA land? I know there's been a big battle with SITLA and short-term rentals. And I think in, in general, the general plan of Ivans for a long time was that resort commercial was going to be the main economic driver, just kind of staying along these lines.
Yeah.
What, what was your thoughts, uh, about SITLA's proposal and, and maybe how would you, obviously the city doesn't actually get a full say on it. This, you know, SITLA can do what they will, um, without city approval, but.
Are you saying like Black Desert's, um, got some, the nightly rentals there?
Well, yeah. So it's, it's not, it's not collectively together with Black Desert. It's a separate parcel, but it's right there behind, uh, Black Desert and where that development is around Padre Canyon Estates.
Oh, it's, um, the retreat.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. And so what, I mean, maybe what was your position on that whole thing?
That's interesting because where I live, I live right on the border of Santa Clara and Ivans. And all that's on the other side of the street from me is all nightly rentals. And so now that I've lived there around that for, I think it's probably been five or six years that that's been, um, you know, utilized, so to say. And I got a chance to go to Santa Clara for a public hearing. I was grateful that they invited us to share our, our insights, even though we're, we're living in Ivans. And I'll be honest with you, I, there were some things I didn't like about it and my wife doesn't like that the view's gone, you know? We used to be able to see into St. George from our house.
Yeah.
But I don't really feel like it's taken too much away. I mean, every once in a while we get side by sides that rip, roar through our street, you know? We hear people playing in the pools and stuff, but I don't really feel like it's a detriment necessarily, um, to us. I think our home values have probably gone up as a result. Um, we've got more amenities, the road's been developed, it's cleaner and easier to, to get around. But I think all of those things have to have some limits, right? It can go crazy. I think Southern Utah is absolutely crazy with nightly rentals right now.
Yeah, me too.
So I don't, I don't know what I think about, honestly, what I think about those. I think so far it's been managed well. It does create some challenges, you know, you don't have, there's no residences living in those. I don't know how the city looks at that as far as, I'm sure that there's probably some income that would come, you know, from that.
Yeah.
But, uh, but I'm probably not versed on that enough to give you a really thorough feedback on, on what they're trying to do and, you know? As a company, my business, we would be voting or bidding on opportunities to provide cabinets and appliances and other things to those companies. And we are looking for the opportunity. I just don't know necessarily what the arrangement agreement is, so.
Just overall, those short-term rentals, do you feel like we've, we've built enough of them? Do you feel like, yeah, obviously a developer is gonna, you know, especially if it's zoned for it, they're going to determine what's the best case scenario, but, do you, do you feel like we've, we've, have we hit a limit?
I, I kind of wonder, I kind of wonder, yeah. I mean, it's strange to me. I feel like, when do we, when do you stop? When is there not enough peep demand, you know?
Right.
When do we meet that demand? Um, obviously it's a beautiful area and that's why we love living there. But I, I think it, it creates an interesting dynamic that we've never had in society. All of this development and no citizens.
Right.
And so I don't, I don't know. I don't know what that means. And maybe we won't know as a community as a whole until it's hopefully not too late to make changes to it. But it does create some interesting challenges that, uh, that I, I think we'll all learn together. So.
You, you mentioned a lot, uh, thank you for completing the survey. And so for anybody listening, all of the candidates have been invited to fill out seven-question survey that we talk about, housing, you know, economic development, water, all those things. So make sure you can, make sure you go to our website, uh, click on the links within the subscription and you'll, uh, you'll be able to see the, the links. VoteSTG.com is kind of be kind of the center point where all the city, uh, interviews and things will be. So voteSTG.com is where, where they'll be able to see your answers.
Okay.
And I think you put a lot of thought and, and energy into answering those and I appreciate that. But thinking about, um, water conservation, the general plan in Ivans, you know, there was a proposal for a reservoir in the Ivans area that met with quite a bit of pushback.
Yeah.
Especially from the Ivans community. When, when you're making these decisions, how do you, how do you think you're going to approach, you know, some of these challenging decisions that might not necessarily be, um, in the, in the short term, popular with the citizens, but maybe in the long term, it might be the best thing for, in general for the community. What, how are you going to go about that?
I guess, uh, my first thought would be is, is first looking at whether or not it's needed, you know? And I, maybe that's, seems like unnecessary to even mention when it comes to water. I don't know that we can have enough water right now.
Yeah.
But, but that's the first thing I think maybe we all want to say, I don't want something, but we need it. And, and I respect that. This is back to the attainable housing situation. But, um, but you know, then if, then if we need it, then it's just a matter of, okay, well, where, you know, maybe you don't want the reservoir right next door to you or you're concerned about some of the other issues that come along with that. But something's got to be done. I mean, I love what, uh, the Water Conservancy District has done for our community. The incentives to help people with water conservancy, the, the, um, is it called secondary water? I can't remember where in Washington, right?
Yeah, it's, it's throughout the county. I think every development in 2015 in Washington County has been required to put in a secondary, you know, a irrigation or second, secondary use line in the development. So basically every house that's built, been built since 2015 onward, has it piped in, it's just connecting all the pieces together is where they're at.
And I like that. I like that. So, so in my opinion in life, it's like, if you believe in something and you're putting some effort to try to get to the solution, you're doing something about it, you know? If you're fighting against a solution you know that needs to be there, then, then I don't feel like that's a cooperative experience. And I, and we all need to do, we all need to do that as a community, or else all of us suffer as well. So I don't know if we have all the answers. I mean, I like some of the proposals that are put out there, you know, whether it be not just in Ivans, but throughout the county. But yeah, I, I thought I understood that the, uh, that the one reservoir was approved actually to be done in, in Ivans, the small one over there by Cantor.
I think the last I heard, and, and somebody could fact check us on this too, and, and I'll, I'll do some research too after this. I think they put it on hold.
Oh, okay.
There was a concern with if the water, uh, water level drops below a certain area, a certain level, that the wind and, uh, basically the, the dust is, is not healthy to the people around. And it is windy, it's windy on the west side. It's windy. They, hurricane gets a, a bad rap for being windy, but Ivans outside of the, outside of the protection of Red Mountain, it's windy over there at Long 91 too. So,
Yeah.
I, I could see some of those concerns. So I, I, I think it was put on hold
Okay.
by the Water Conservancy District, but there was a big, there was a lot of pressure from,
Yeah.
you know, the citizens of Ivans to, to put this, put a stop to that. And also, you know, have you thought through maybe, obviously we can't say just no to everything. Back to your point on, how do we make, how do, how do we make progress for things that we need? Not just stuff that we want, but things that we need.
Yeah.
You know, concessions, like how do we do this in a, in a more thoughtful way? Have you thought about it for water? You know, obviously it's not just an Ivans problem, it's a county problem, but have you thought about that as, as much?
Well, yeah, I mean, I have thought about it a lot, actually. Um, you know, each year, back to the Leadership Dixie program, we, we spent a, a whole day, um, dedicated just to, to growth, the challenges and blessings of growth in our community. And, and one of those presentations is always by the Water Conservancy District. And, you know, they talked to us about the Lake Powell Pipeline, about, um, the Warner Valley Reservoir and, and all the other plans that they're working on. You know, aquifers and, um, and certainly the restrictions are now put on new development, right? How much grass you can have and so forth. And again, that's, you know, I guess that, the nice thing I like about that is, is if I'm going to build a house in Washington County, then there's, there's limitations and agreements and I either agree to do it or I don't. Either if I don't agree to do it, then I just don't build, right? So I like that because it's an agreement. I like that, that I have a house. I probably have a little more grass than I should have. I probably need to turn some of that into, to, um, you know, rock and other things like that to contribute to that as well. I've thought about it many times as I mow my lawn. It's not real big. It's not a big lot. But I, but I think, you know, I look at things I can do personally. Um, you know, I think there's a lot more we could do. You know, whether it be just simply the, the amount of water we use for our appliances in our house and all of those, those things. But I really don't think the government and the community doesn't do their part in communicating, educating that. I feel like it's done well. I think the challenge is, I'm not sure if we're all moving fast enough to stay ahead of the, of the, of the depreciation in water from what we're using. And so, yeah, I mean, when it comes down to it, you know, we haven't had to have, what do they call those in California where they say you can't use your water, you know?
Yeah, water restriction days. Yeah.
We don't get those, haven't had those yet.
Yeah.
I don't even know that they've, I think they told us they haven't had to do them yet. But I imagine that will come down the road if we can't figure out a way to get more water somehow. So.
Yeah, I think so too. And, and it's a tough, tough situation too, because it's the, you know, you have a big conservative population that doesn't want the government intervening on things. And then sometimes the government has to intervene.
Yeah.
And, and the water is owned by the state of Utah and from its inception, you know, the constitution says that the water that falls within its boundaries are managed by Army Corps of Engineers and the state of Utah.
Good point.
And they get to control that. So it's, it's an interesting, uh, balance, you know?
Yeah, we can't, there's only so much water you can take off of your roof, I understand.
Yeah, it's, everything's restricted, you know? And so, and which is good though, because we don't sell it out to private companies like they did in California, which is, that privatization of that water, then all of a sudden the public doesn't get, it's not a public benefit, which seems like you're like, I need, uh, food, water and shelter to survive. So yeah, if you think about like, what are our God-given rights? It's like, we should probably have those three things. And if, if water's an issue and housing's an issue, we're, we're not doing too good on the, on the three. So it's, it's an interesting, it's a tough, tough place to be and the government isn't always going to solve all of our problems.
No, I remember one, uh, presentation by Zach Rinstrom with Water Conservancy District and he said, we don't have a problem with the amount of water that, that comes to our, our land here. It's retaining it, it's capturing it. And so that's why those reservoirs are so important. And, and obviously when we get too much water, what happens? Well, then the beautiful waterfalls over there at Gunlock Reservoir happen.
Yeah.
And that's great, but then all that luscious valuable water.
It's just going down the stream.
That's right. So I, I think the, I think more needs to be done. And it's just a matter again of, I don't know. I think that's one of the talents I feel like God's given me is that when a problem is put in front of us, somehow my mind just works, 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 works and comes up with creative ways to say, well, have we thought about this approach? I don't necessarily have an idea right now for that, but when, when, as we continue to develop those things and if I'm voted to be on the city council, then that's something I'm going to bring to the table is just creative, creative ideas and let other people, you know, put their pieces together and see if we can come up with something really good that makes it work.
Yeah. As a community communication, Ivans, I think has done a pretty good, pretty good job at that. What are your thoughts on how the city council should be, you know, communicating to the citizens? And, and how do you get more engagement from the local community? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, I think we have, there's certainly plenty of people, certain people who are vocal, certain percentage of the population. You know, the, the ones who want to say, I don't like this, and the ones who say, I really want this, or whatever. How do you get the rest? You know, maybe the other 60 or 70% of, of the citizens? I think it's just honestly through just genuine human, human kindness, in my opinion. It's, it's about connecting with people, right? What are you, meeting with people, talking to people? What are your needs? What are your wishes? What do you wish would happen? And maybe you go to them instead of having them come to the city council, if that makes sense, you know? I go out and, and connect with people in person and I don't think we'll always connect to everybody. I mean, honestly, Mayor Hart, I think has, has done a lot for the, for the city, I think, you know, with, with the, the challenges that you've expressed and the things I'm, you know, facing, um, and trying to contribute to the city. I think that they put a lot of thought into the things that they've done. I may not agree with all the little things that they've done, but that's life, right? But I think they've done a really good job of trying to communicate. I've been involved in many, uh, public hearings or, um, meet and greets or things like that where we can express our concerns. You know, there was the night sky issue that was happening years ago.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I was actually, I was very much, um, in agreement that, um, that we shouldn't let the government restrict everybody's properties and what we do. But I was concerned because we didn't have lights on our, on our street corners for safety reasons, on my very street corner. And so I had that perspective saying, hey, I agree with this, but at the same time, you know, it feels a little awkward. I feel a little unsafe sometimes walking around my corner. So I want to see it from both perspectives. I want to hear everybody's thoughts on any of these issues. And I won't be able, I only have one vote, right? But I, I feel like I'm a pretty persuasive person, especially when it comes to things that are really meaningful and make sense. And I think I have a pretty good ability to express that in ways that people can understand. So, you know, if I find that I can contribute that way, that it helps, then, then that's great.
Yeah. Well, uh, any, any other thoughts? Is there any other, uh, you know, a platform as a candidate's running? They typically stand on a couple of different, you know, hey, these are the things that I'm really trying to bring to the table. Have you thought through, what are your, what are your three big rocks, if you will?
I appreciate the way you're asking that, even just asking if I thought about it with, with consideration for me, being in my first time doing this. I have, and I don't, I, I don't feel like I'm standing on any particular platform if, per se, for whatever it's worth. I feel like I, I want, I want to be here. I want to help. Um, so people need, maybe you need to vet it out of me. I don't know. But maybe that's not right. And I apologize for those who want to hear a lot more about that.
No, it's okay.
But, um, but I truly care about Ivans. I care about people. I care about, I really am grateful for the people who have made it life better for me there. And I want to continue to do that. Um, you know, we, we did touch on attainable housing. I think that is something very important to figure something out. What can we do? I like the, the accessory dwelling units that are being, um, available in a lot of the communities. I think that's an important way to find a way for a single individual or maybe a, a couple to live in something like that, um, and make it affordable. Brings in some income for the person having the property. And honestly, I think, again, lightening some, maybe some of the, the, uh, the getting, the permitting process and some of those restrictions might be nice and, and will be necessary in some cases. Again, I don't have a particular thing I'd like to say for this project or for this situation, but like SITLA, like they're asking people to come and say, how are you going to help, you know, with the solution too? That's kind of the same thing I'm thinking. It was, hey, let's make it easier for people to come to the table with, with ideas, especially the developers and people who have, um, a financial incentive to do so. I want to make a profit on this, even if it's a smaller profit on a project like this. And the city says, well, what if we tried this, you know? So I mean, the, the state's doing that. Why can't the city do it too? So.
That's, that's a good one. Did you go, I think yesterday they did, uh, the planning commission had the conversation around ADUs and, and redesigning that code. Were you?
I wasn't.
Did you go to that?
No, unfortunately not.
Yeah, the ADU is an interesting, uh, conversation because I, I think it's, it's a pebble. It's a pebble, you know, it's, it's one of the things that can help with the attainable housing and, and creating more roofs. And then at the same time, I struggle with every roof is a net. And then at the same time, I struggle with, every roof is a net cost to any city, right? And so as you're saying that, my thought process goes, well, the, there's not a whole lot of benefit to the city to just keep building houses, right? Because it costs them money to build more houses. And so how do we, how do we diversify that economic, you know, revenue coming into the city to be able to balance and have, and keep the quality of life? You know, and make sure that people are, ambulances and police show up, you know, in, in normal call times, right? And keep us safe.
Yeah.
It's a difficult thing. Traffic ends up coming into it and traffic runs into Santa Clara and St. George. It's not just an Ivans problem, it's a everybody problem. So it's complicated, it's a complex thing. It sounds, it sounds like you're up for it though, you're up for the challenge.
I think so. I mean, I want to try anyway, I'll do my best. A couple of the things, maybe just to throw out there that you made me think about. One, one does come to our, our, you know, our fire and police professionals. I have a great deal of respect for them. I think it's really important that they feel supported and have the needs that they, they have, whether it be for equipment, technology, things like that. And, and plenty of support in helping them to get the training and resources they need. I do believe that's done really well in our community right now and I just don't want that to change. My father was in law enforcement for nearly 40 years and I'm very grateful for, you know, him being able to, he enjoyed it, he loved it. You know, there's a lot of tough situations he dealt with, but it was a good experience for him as well. And then other than that, there is, I mentioned there's a meeting tonight about taxation. So I, I, I don't think most communities, when you establish a standard of, of taxation, so to say, that grows with your, with your growth, right? Especially with your, your property taxes, sales tax with, with the commercial side. I don't see reasons why that should increase. I'm not saying that there's never a reason it shouldn't. But I think if a community is run well, then it's just a matter of saying this, it's a budget, right? I don't want to stretch beyond the budget. If I can't get that parked to be the way that we want it, is there another source of revenue? Can we find some other method, grants or some other means that brings money? And I don't know if a grant's always applicable in those situations, but I'm not, I don't think the community wants tax increases as far as percentage of increase.
Right.
To me, that's like, it's almost like in a business. If I can go to other businesses and say, I'm going to get 6.75%, I know that the city doesn't get that percentage. But if I can get a certain percentage of your business, it's perpetual and it's also growth based. It's scalable based on the growth of the business. So as our community grows, now the values of our properties have increased, the taxable values increased. I know that everything, all the other costs go up too. So I think that's a very careful, you know, balancing act, but I really don't want to see the taxes go up.
Yeah.
I don't see the value in that. If, if something's presented to me that says there is no way to do it without taxes going up, even the basic needs, well, then I guess that's a very hard decision to have to make. I hope we don't have to make that decision, but I, that's what I'm going to go to tonight and find out, so.
Sounds good. Okay, my last question, this might be a tough one.
Okay, try it.
What are your thoughts on term limits? And do you support term limits?
That's funny you say that, because just this morning I was talking to somebody and they were telling me that they worked with one of the state lawmakers that I had a great deal of respect for. And it's one of those guys that I felt like he was such a gentleman, so nice, so considerate and, and very thoughtful. Kind of like you said about one of the city council members earlier. And, and so even though he served, I think he served like four, four terms, in a way it was kind of a bummer to see him go because he was doing such a good job. I think term limits are very important. I think if it's done well, like in the organization is, yeah, the whole idea is to, to develop and build citizen-involved people, right? Like you're saying, if we, I, I know that your purpose for that thing, the survey was to get 25% increase in voter turnout. I think that's a phenomenal goal. And so if we can engage, if the, the citizens feel a part, they feel like people care, they feel like their voice matters, then they'll be more engaged. When they're more engaged, they'll be more prepared to serve when the time's right. And then we can start to build and then we won't feel like there's a huge gap between somebody who's been in there for four or five terms. They leave and take a lot of experience with them and somebody else kind of takes some years to get up to where they're at. I think that can start to build and, and be a little more evened out. But I do think term limits are important because it does cause a big discrepancy if you go too long with somebody serving.
Yeah.
You mean, are you even asking on a city council level, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah.
I don't know, I suppose, I suppose, yeah.
I, I tend to think, you know, there are certain movements that start from the bottom and then there are certain movements that start at the top. And we, we tend to get steered from the top a lot of times.
Yeah.
And, and as I think about that question, it seems to me that most politicians, when asked that question, they're going to be in favor of term limits.
Yeah.
Yet we don't see it anywhere.
I know, it is a strange one, especially on the federal level, you know, senators and, and house representatives. I mean, I don't know if it's because they're paid so well and, and there's a lot of benefits that come along with that, I don't know. But I, I agree, it doesn't feel like, you know, it shouldn't be a career, you know, it should be an opportunity to serve. And that's one of the things I like about our system, the mayor, you know, it's not a full-time job. The only full-time jobs I know of for politicians in our community is the, the, the county commissioners.
Yeah.
And so, and from what I understand, they do, they work like 60 hours a week for what they do.
Yeah.
So.
And even, even like, you know, the city council, it's a five-member council in St. George and they got a 110,000 population. It's not district, right? So it's, you get, majority of the council members are in one very specific area of St. George. So there's not a lot of representation throughout, right? And so you, you, you think of as far as like a representative democracy, right? And you start at the, the base level. You know, if, if Southern Utah set the tone and the city councils and the mayors all say, hey, we're doing term limits and we can start showing that there is value in doing this and you can get momentum moving that way so that it, it can move up, up the chain.
Yeah.
And, and I, I think it's a, it's a political movement that requires everybody seeing this as, as a legitimate issue, right? And even at the local level, you know, there's most, for the most part, the city councils and mayors change over fairly often, but not always. Mayor Hart's served for a long time, you know, Rick Rosenberg served for a long time. I, I just think that when you get a fresh new look and fresh ideas, those, those can only be good, good things.
Yeah.
And there's, there's, there's this accountability thing that happens when you're on your, your last term, you know, and you're not saying, oh, I'm going to run again, so I'm going to make certain decisions based off this idea that I might not get elected back in. They might be able to make decisions that might not necessarily be the most popular, but they can step back and say, hey, is this for the good of the greater community? And, and be a little bit more bold with some of the things that they do.
Yeah.
But I can, I can see the argument. People like the status quo for the most part, most people don't like a whole lot of change. But I just think is getting fresh new looks and, and creating a system to where, you know, as a, a final term city council member, they can go to somebody and say, hey, I, I want to, I want to help you, right? I'm going to be leaving the seat, but I want to help you and educate you on the things that I learned along the way. And then now there's a, there's a, they can step up on each other rather than that person leaves and then there's 15 years gone. It's like, they're still typically in the community, they can still.
They can still contribute, yeah.
Yeah, they can contribute and they can, maybe they go on to be mayor at that point or then they go on to, you know, the county commissioner. So even if somebody really sees value in making it a career as a politician, they can move up the room and, and serve in different ways, but.
You know, that's interesting. So I'm going to demonstrate now my creative thinking for a second here, for those to see if they, they, they agree with my way of doing things. But one of the thoughts that comes to me, part of my experience in getting to where I'm at right now, which is not a lot, but like the Home Builders Association, which I'm, my company's a member of, the Realtors Association, both of them hosted a little bit of a, a, a roundtable discussion, probably a month and a half, two months ago, with those that were interested in serving, you know, for public office. And they gave a lot of advice and tips and ideas. So one of my thoughts comes, as you talk about that, would, wouldn't it be great if there was a couple of organizations said, we're going to help the people who even are considering down the road and doing this stuff to help them get ready for it?
Yeah.
So that when the time's right, it's not such that big gap. You know, maybe they're going to the city council meetings regularly, you know? Maybe they're even interacting with the mayor a lot more often if they want to, that they want to run for mayor.
It could be a part of Leadership Dixie.
For sure, for sure.
It could be like an arm of that kind of an organization.
It could even be something, you know, like you can do on police ride-alongs, right? You could do a mayor ride-along. I mean, in a way, I mean, you could do these things, you could probably create a way to make it easier to say, okay, we're going to put term limits in place, but as well as we're going to create a system so that we feel like people are, are sliding into those opportunities with a lot more understanding of their roles.
Yeah.
And everybody's not having to pick up the pieces and fill in the blanks while they're kind of getting their feet underneath them for the next six months to a year.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So anyway, that's just one thought, so.
All right, so we'll, we'll expect a vote on term limits when you're a city council member, all right?
Sounds good.
Okay, man, well, hey, thanks for coming on.
Thank you.
Where can people find out more information about you?
Good question. So I just barely set up a website called shad serves.com. So I, you know, and you'll find just a landing page there right now. Hopefully we'll have more information on there soon. And so shad serves.com and I hope I can be of service, so.
Thanks, man. Good luck in the race.[1774.62]